Hi Director Moore, are you ready to, uh, are you ready to go?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, alright, so you can start your presentation.
Jenny, can you bring up the presentation, please? Alright, um, I want to just, uh, start by saying thank you all for this opportunity to come and spend the next couple hours talking about the future for Baltimore City Recreation and Parks and our FY21 budget presentation. I, I want to start by just highlighting, uh, some, some things that we've really accomplished in this current budget year even through, during the COVID pandemic. One of the, the high areas, one of the key areas I continuously heard when I came in the door, a little over two years, and I believe it not, it's almost three years, is that our capital projects was not moving and I'm, I'm excited to say at the start and during this budget year, there's over forty-four million dollars in capital projects that's on the streets. With an additional thirty million dollars that is, uh, will be on the, the streets in construction within the next sixty days. So truly excited about the focus and the direction that we've gone there. But, um, also Jenny, next slide, um, I want to highlight some additional things. One, uh, is our first ever facilities assessment. There's been different assessments that's been done by the agency, but this assessment squarely was focused on, um, the things that you normally may not see, the, the MEPs, the, the, just the structure of the buildings. And, uh, what this assessment will do is give us a guide of how we can move forward with our capital budgeting and budgeting and focusing on our existing structures. Another, uh, assessment or asset that we've, we've had to, uh, over the years has been what's been happening on our swimming pools. As everyone know, we have twenty-three swimming pools or aquatic centers throughout our city. Uh, most of those, uh, aquatic facilities are outdated, old, um, and they need upgrades and renovations. So what we also did was we did an aquatics assessment and during the aquatics assessment, we now, uh, clearly understand where our problems in our pools, how we rank our pools and how we can move forward. Uh, of course, uh, last summer, we had an opportunity to launch in our first ever Charm City Games, uh, where we saw youth competing throughout the, the city of Baltimore. Unfortunately, due to pandemic this year, we was looking forward to year two, but unfortunately, we could not, um, make that happen due to the circumstances. Uh, thanks to the support of the mayor and this council, we was able to secure an additional two point six million dollars for staffing and programming to, uh, introduce or increase Saturday operations at all forty-two of our rec centers. Uh, we saw, uh, we continuously, uh, was seeing increase in participation. Um, the average was roughly about five thousand monthly participants on just a Saturday, um, attendance at our different facilities. And over the last couple of months, unfortunately for this entire city, this entire nation, we've had to experience a pandemic. But for me, it, it, it showed the true heart of our agency because our teams have not stopped working. Even as, as, uh, we start looking at how we can move staff, uh, into, um, working at home. Our, our recreation team, um, had to step up to the plate to make sure that we continue to serve the needs of our communities, uh, through meal service. Um, as you can see, we've served well over six hundred thousand meals and that's six hundred thousand plus. And, and just to, the, the note that our staff, it wasn't a Monday through Friday, it's, this was a seven day a week operation that our team came in. But also our, our park maintenance, I have to, uh, give them, uh, also kudos for continuing to work through, um, with the different needs in our city as well as our forestry division. We've had a couple of windstorms even during this pandemic and bringing our team back to work. So I, I'm, I'm really excited about our team and where we're going. Um, I'm really excited, uh, the last thing that I'm, the two things I will note and then we'll go into the budget slides is our, as we figure out ways that we can continue to connect our kids and get them outdoors, um, through the leadership of Mayor Hart Council and our, our, our nature education division, we was able to, uh, get the mayor to sign our first ever, uh, children's outdoor bill of rights. Uh, with that bill of rights, it's just guidance for us to continue to work to find programming to make sure that our kids are being exposed to, uh, the nature and just getting them outside, which is really important as we continue to find ways that we can be creative and innovative and engage in our youth. But with all of that, you, you have to have a clear strategy or a clear plan. Um, and so with the support of our team, with the support of the community, uh, we are now in year one of our rec twenty twenty-five plan. Um, and what we're doing is we're, we're taking that plan and creating a snapshot of where we're going to be over the next five years, how we look and how we can move forward. So I'm really excited about, um, the rec twenty twenty-five plan. It's, it's helped us in the restructuring and reorganization of our agency, um, as well as looking at policies and procedures and making sure that we can hold ourselves accountable during, uh, this process as well as giving our citizens, uh, and elected officials an opportunity to, uh, hold us accountable. Uh, there's dashboards that kept, that's, that's constantly updated monthly, uh, to let the community as well as anyone that goes out to our rec twenty twenty-five dot com, myrectwentytwentyfive.com, uh, site, you will be to see the dashboard that gives you, uh, real time updates of where we are in our different target areas. So with that being said, uh, there again, I want to start by talking about our first service number, which is six forty-four, it's our administration budget. Um, this budget is recommended to have roughly six point eight million in administrative budget. This is where our director's office is located. This is where our engineering services, our capital development, our information technology, physical services, our, uh, human resources, our personnel, um, our development and marketing service. And, and I, that's a, a group that has continued to strive and redevelop themselves and, and figure out ways of how we can, uh, continue to tell the BCRP story and also connecting us to our communities, um, our risk and, and securities in this division. And then we, there was during our, uh, restructuring, there was the focus of our, um, community. Uh, it was, I was amazed about the lack of our, um, connection to our community. So also in this, um, division is our community engagement strategic partnership. Um, and, and that division has been doing a tremendous job of connecting our, our communities, going into community means because we clearly need to make sure what we're doing is, is serving the citizens of Baltimore in the best way possible. Some of the major budget highlights there, um, as we continue to increase our volunteership, uh, we continue to see growing numbers. We see that there's times where there's a backup in our, our, uh, background checks. So with additional twenty thousand dollar increase, we're going to be able to get a second background check machine so we can continue to process our volunteers as well as our staff. Um, during, um, these challenging times, uh, we was asked to look at some of our vacant positions. Uh, it's in this division, we did define three positions, but we also transferred four of those positions from the general fund to the state fund. And then also our position consists of new, uh, ten new, uh, public open space funded positions that's in our capital development. And with those additional ten, uh, with additional ten positions, that's when I was talking about the forty-four million dollars of capital prizes on the streets. Um, it's because of the, the added staff that's needed and, and, uh, the leader there being focused and refocusing his team, uh, to make sure that we're strategic and efficient in the way we're doing things. Next slide. Our next slide is our aquatic services. Uh, this is our service number six forty-five, uh, they've recommended much for twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one is two point five millions. It's in, uh, this service is where we have six large park pools, thirteen neighborhood walk two pools and three indoor pools. I will tell you, uh, we're, we're so excited, uh, for our Druid Hill Aquatic Center. Uh, that facility was recently, a couple of months ago awarded and that construction will start in the next fourteen days. Um, and that's a seven, almost ten million dollar investment in improvement of that, uh, Druid Hill Pool. So we're really excited about what's going to happen there. Um, one of the major budget, uh, cuts to, to talk about is it wasn't a cut as we moved in an aquatic center position, we transferred to our senior services. Our senior has also gone through restructuring and we saw a vacant position that we could move over to assist our senior program and to continue to give her the support as she continues to grow. Also, it was, it was last year that the mayor made an initiative that he committed, uh, two hundred thousand dollars to senior program and to increase his operations and help expand senior program. And so, uh, with that, we needed to definitely add an additional position there. And then that we had one position also that was, uh, vacant that we defined it. And with these defined positions, it, it will minimize impact on city services, but there will be some agency operations, uh, agency operation impacts, but we will continue to, uh, be creative, uh, with our operations to make sure that we, there is no, like I said, no impact in our citywide service. Next slide. Uh, the next one is our, uh, park maintenance division, six hundred, six forty-six. Uh, of course, it's the park maintenance division that's responsible for our forty-six hundred plus acres of parkland, uh, two hundred seventy, uh, individual sites that includes parks like Druid Hill, the historic Mount Vernon Place, neighborhood parks and playgrounds. Also, they're responsible for cleaning and replacing playgrounds and also preparation of maintenance of the athletic fields, basketball and tennis courts. One of the highlights I would like to also mention in this division is that we have athletic fields throughout our city. We have a hundred and seventy plus athletic fields and we didn't have a division that was focused on how we continue to maintain and improve our athletic fields. We, during this budget year, uh, created our own turf maintenance team, um, that's also housed in this division to help focus on, on, on our athletic fields and, and developing a strategy and plan, the same strategy and plan that we're trying to create with our aquatics centers and having, um, other way to allocate funding going forward. The same. Is, I'm not sure.
Councilwoman Snead, can you mute?
I think the host might have to mute Councilwoman Snead.
Yeah. Counsel President, you were saying something, but I couldn't hear you.
Councilwoman Snead, that's all.
Did we exit out? Okay, alright, um, as I was saying is that is this, this division, uh, one of the highlights is that we, we created a new turf maintenance division. Another challenge that we continue to hear was about how we maintain our facilities. Uh, and we had different divisions, different individuals, different positions and different divisions throughout our agency. So we've also, uh, created a facility maintenance division. We brought over the nine positions from the different areas, uh, so that we can be centralized and we can be more efficient and making sure that we get our service requests answered and repaired in, in a, uh, timely fashion. And we have seen some improvements there, uh, uh, with the new leadership that's there that's overseeing our maintenance team. Next slide. Youth and Adult Sports is our service number six forty-seven, uh, has, um, this year's recommendations of million dollar budget. This is the, the division that focuses on all of our citywide athletics as well as support our different youth groups throughout our communities. And this is, you know, from our, uh, basketball, football, uh, boxing, soccer, uh, tennis, just to name a few. Um, and what they're continually trying to do is to find ways that we, uh, improve our, our connection and offer different, uh, sporting opportunities. Um, and they're, they're, they're actually working on now, uh, even a new innovative piece, I think everybody, I may or may not know is, is that one of the growing, um, sports industry, um, is esports. And so we are anxiously developing strategies and plans that we hope to roll on this next budget year, uh, to offer and create our first esports facility in Baltimore, which is going to be a plus for our youth throughout the city as well as, uh, our adults. And, uh, one of the, the things that continue to challenge our team is that we have to be innovative and just think outside the box and making sure that we're serving and touching every kid. Because unfortunately, every kid is not interested in soccer and baseball, uh, or, or sports. They're, they want robotics, they want STEM, they want other, uh, activities. And so really excited about the work that our leadership team over in our youth and adult sports, especially with the introduction of this esports. So I can't wait to get that rolling. Uh, next slide, please. Our largest, uh, division is our community recreation centers is service number six forty-eight, uh, just a little over seven, seventeen million dollars. Again, this was the division last year, uh, with the support of, of our council president, our mayor and, uh, the council to, to, uh, uh, you know, extend and, and give us two point six million dollars. And with that, we was able to hire forty-five additional rec leader, two positions to support our extended hours. Um, also, uh, what we've, we've put in this budget is that as we continue to develop partnerships and create opportunities, um, between BBMR and our physical services, we allocated nine hundred forty thousand unallocated grants as a placeholder. So as we go out and solicit grants, we'll have an opportunity that we can, uh, be able to spend those funds without having to come back and ask for additional budget allocations or repurposing of, of grant money. So, um, that's the flexibility for us. Um, also this division is responsible for the forty-three rec centers. Um, we're excited that by the end of the year, first of the year, uh, we will have our first fitness and wellness facility complete, which is our, uh, Kay Hill Fitness and Wellness Site. Also, uh, we, we're, we're excited that by the fall, we'll be breaking ground, um, on our second fitness and wellness facility, which, um, which is our Miller Brent, uh, fitness and wellness facility at Cherry Hill, uh, which is something that the Cherry Hill community has been asking for, for many years. And we're, we're excited to be able to deliver, uh, that facility. Also, we have, uh, capital, uh, is in final stages in budgeting for, not budgeting, sorry, but, uh, finishing the bid process on Toanda, which is a, a, a rec center that will be renovating and bringing it back online. So we're really focusing on how we can, uh, open rec centers, but being efficient and how we operate these facilities, uh, is important. And that's why we're, uh, you know, during this restructuring, we identified the need to have a, a programming division. And that programming division has been doing a tremendous job. Unfortunately, uh, last November, uh, we did lose a leader that, that division, but we're in the process of, of rehiring, um, and the individual ended up, uh, passing on. So, uh, she brought a lot of energy. She's really put some things in place before, uh, she died for the agency and we'll continue to look at the footprint. We now have target areas, uh, for programming categories of what, what our programmers should be fitting in. And so they can just help structure our, our, our programming for our rec centers. So I know that was another area that the community had been concerned about is the lack of program. But I can assure you, um, with what we're doing now, and, and we have a STEM education coordinator, um, that's on board. So there, there's, there's a great opportunity, the future is bright with our programs, the future is bright with what we're doing on our rec centers. Next slide. Uh, special facilities, this, this, uh, service number six forty-nine, I, I am concerned about this, this division, this facility. And the reason I say that is because this facility is managed and operated off of revenue. If it, and if it can generate revenue, then how do they, uh, secure their funding for their budgets? Uh, this is the facility that has Myers, this is the facility, this is the vision that has, um, our shake and bake fun, family fun center, Kerry Murray, uh, the Rowing Club. Uh, so this is the, the revenue generating facility. Unfortunately, um, COVID has played a significant impact in our revenue. So where we, we projected a three point one million dollar, uh, budget for this year, we are concerned about this, uh, and how we, uh, how it will impact our revenue. And I just, I wanted to highlight that and bring that point because I am concerned about that. But we are continually looking at ways that we can, uh, reopen as we, you know, this is, these are facilities that you would clearly see in our latter stages or, uh, the cities probably face three, but how do we reopen? And then there's a capacity deal. You won't be able to have the same number of capacity that you had there before. And so our team is, is developing the strategies around that, but I, I did want to note that, but, uh, as we move forward. Next slide, please. Um, our horticulture division is division six fifty, one point seven million. This is, um, the, the division that focuses on all our beautification of plants, growing our, our flowers in the house and, and maintaining our two jewel facilities in our Rollins Conservancy as well as our Severn Arbor Garden. Um, as well as, uh, also maintaining our, our greenhouses. We're really excited this year during the capital, uh, budget process, um, as we continue to develop our equity strategies, we made sure that, uh, we brought all of our team members in so that when we made these decisions, it was a holistic approach based on equity, based on a scoring system that we use. And, um, I'm, I'm excited to, to note that our greenhouses, which has been needed and loved for many years, has been, um, allocated to receive funding this year so for renovation, so we can continue to grow flowers in our, in our greenhouse as well as be able to maintain and provide flower beds throughout our city. Next slide. Recreation for seniors is service six, six fifty-one, as I stated earlier, this is the one that's, um, includes a proposed two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars in the general fund for creating new senior recreation program. And, uh, we have Miss Jansen that's running this program. And she, one of the things she's looking at is that working closely with the health department and making sure that we continue to identify, uh, target areas where there may not be senior program and seeing how we can collaborate with rec centers and create the golden age clubs, which is senior programs that are ran, uh, mostly out of our rec centers. So, um, she's really excited about this additional funding and helping her in, increase her strategies and how she focuses going forward. Next slide. Therapeutic Recreation, um, is, is another area that, uh, we as an agency have to continue to find ways that we can support. Uh, it, it's, it's less than a half a million dollars and, and, uh, we have so many limitations. And I just, I, I applaud what Rob Signor does with the therapeutic recreation, uh, division with, with a limited budget. And, and we understand that, that budgets, you know, we, um, offer programs to our, our, our special populations, therapeutic community. And, um, we, we want to find ways that we can continue to grow our program and expand into maybe some additional locations throughout the city. So that is something that we're going to really be focused on in twenty twenty-one is looking at our, our budget across the board and see if there's other opportunities or seeing if there's additional ways that we can find additional funding, hopefully for the FY twenty-two budget. Next slide. Uh, park programming events, uh, it is, this division is where we, we are housed, uh, all our special events as well as our park range. And I know there's been a lot of talk about what, uh, you know, the, the role of park ranges and how they, their enforcement and, and, and rules enforcement. And one of the things I'm, I'm excited about is that we work with DHR and we now have, uh, established classes so we can start looking at how we can, uh, put ranges in the proper class to be able to continue to perform the job. Uh, currently, as you see, we only have six ranges throughout the entire city. So there's definitely something we have to look at. But this is another, uh, area that I have to stress the, of concern because this is another revenue generating division. Uh, there is, there is no general fund support here. So, uh, their, their sole focus is on, you know, prevailing rentals, park usage, um, you know, rental equipment. But, uh, due to COVID, a lot of those things have been ceased at this point in time. So this is another division, it's one point one million that we are having to keep our eye on and work with BBMR to, uh, try to determine how we move forward with this division. And next slide. Now, our found division is, is service number six fifty-four is our urban forestry division. Um, Eric does a tremendous job leading this team. Um, we are, uh, continuing to address our, our needs. I was also thankful for, uh, what council did, uh, last couple of years in supporting us with stomp removal, um, and making sure that we try to remove as many stomps as we can. Uh, as you, you know, notice that there's a little over three thousand stomps in our city. And unfortunately, as we remove stomps, there's still trees, there's still storms that come in. But in our new contract for our tree, uh, with our new tree contract, they're not just removing stomps, they're, they're removing an entire tree. So that will help us reduce that number so it won't continue to grow. Um, and then also, uh, another one of our big focus in our urban forestry is increasing and growing our tree canopy. Um, and we have roughly, uh, four point five million dollars in that, uh, overall division budget. Um, and then there, you know, as you can see in FY twenty, uh, we, the goal was to try to, uh, plant twenty, uh, three thousand trees. That's all the different service. So, next slide. I believe councilman gets, uh, slide, slide for, I'll turn, comes back, goes back over to you now for questions.
Yes, thank you Director, I thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, you mentioned a lot about the opening the rec centers on Saturday. And so I do applaud Council President Scott for that and, um, the council for pushing that forward.
Mr. Chair, uh, can I ask a few questions before I have to jump to another thing really quickly?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Director, and thank you guys for all of your, your, your hard work. Uh, and also thank you to the folks in the community team. I probably, I am the only other person that knows how they feel because that used to be me as a team of one. So I know how important it is to rebuild that relationship. I got a couple of questions I want to ask you. I want to start off by talking about aquatics, uh, and talking about, uh, knowing that we don't know how likely it is that you're even going to be able to open pools this year. But can you talk about, we know last year we talked about, uh, some in, immediate needs, uh, for fixing up our pools and getting them up to, to snuff so that, so to speak. Can you talk about where we are in that and what the dollar amount is for that?
Yes, sir, I could, I, as I stated earlier, we have finished, we, probably two weeks ago, got the final assessment for aquatics. And we now know, uh, the, the aquatic, the pools was system was ranked one through four, one being the greatest and four been need a lot of work. And right now, um, in this first, and, and according to the assessment, there's three of our existing neighborhood pools that are, are fourth. And so what we're wanting to do with the capital money that we have allocated this year is to focus on those, those, uh, three pools first. Um, and that I'll give you an idea, those pools range from as low as three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to as high as eight hundred thousand. Just depends on, you know, and that's just the scope of work of, of, you know, improving all, improving the pools. Um, so that is, that is one of the things that we are positive about. Um, overall, I don't have a, a total dollar amount, but I can definitely get you the total dollar amount that the consultants recommended that will fix all twenty-three.
And do you, and do, and for those, those ones that you're focusing on immediately now, do you have the capital, do you have the money allocated for those right now to start that work?
We, we have, in our current capital budget, we have one point five million, uh, that, that was approved in this upcoming year. Um, and so what we're going to do is look at, uh, writing the scopes, putting the scopes together and then, you know, bidding it out for the three, what, what we're not going to do is we're not going to use one of our own costs. We're going to actually do, use our capital division so that we can get the best quote and, and that way we can get three or four different companies that may bid on the project. Um, but the one point five, sir, I, we'll see, but I don't know if I'm confident enough to say that it's enough to, to repair all three pools.
And I take, I'll take that as a no, that we have to find, find, find more resources to that, to that end. Uh, I thank you, thank you for that. And then get that, the other number to us, that'd be appreciated. The second one is recsims. I think, uh, you, you know that, uh, having recsims open on Saturday was the first thing that I focused on, uh, when becoming council president. But as we had the discussion last year, uh, you know that I also think that we should have a seven day model and want to talk about what's your, like, what's your thoughts on that? And then also how we can, um, in places where there are no direct centers, like for example, in Councilman Slyfler's district, there are none, uh, how we can also, uh, use that to also do programming at spaces and locations and even maybe in schools.
Thank you for that question, Council President. I'll, I'll start by saying that, that is something that we'll have to definitely look at, uh, just, I, I don't want to give you, uh, just a, off the top of my head answer. I, I would like to really assess what's the best solution for seven day. I, I, I'm not sure if the answer will be to open up all forty-two centers. And it may be how you approach it from a regional standpoint so that you can continue to track the numbers to make sure the support is there. I will tell you and Councilman Slyfler may be excited as well is that, um, this summer, we're doing B more farm, B more fund sites, um, at, at twenty different locations throughout the city. And one of the things we want to make sure is that every one of the councilmen's districts had a site. This year, we, we, there is a B more fu, summer fund site at, uh, Luckman Park, which is in District Five. So I think what we need to do is look at the, the, the space that's there and find ways that we can utilize that space. And maybe often outdoor activities are doing pop-ups until we can determine if there's, you know, funding ever to, to build a rec center in, uh, in this district. But there, there's still, you know, a, you know, C.C. Jackson is in close proximity to the district.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Director, so we had like five thousand, uh, participants in the Saturday, uh, programming last year, correct?
That's, that's on a monthly average.
Yeah, monthly, right, yeah.
Yes.
So just wanted to see, like, thinking about that and moving that to seven day, like, how we could have, again, how we could have that, that, that best impact? But then also wanted to see if you guys knew, like, where, like, were there places where we had higher and lower? Were there places that were just consistent the whole time?
Yes, sir, I can, I, we do have that information, we do have that data because, uh, what we've continued to stress our team, um, is that we had to make sure that, you know, you're checking people in, you know, and, and our, uh, rec software. Um, so I can get that, that information to you, but we, we know the areas where there's, there was high attendance, where there was low attendance. Um, and then what we're beyond just telling the story of the numbers is, is our staff assessing what is happening in those areas. Cause I mean, there's kids in the areas, but is there a, a programming issue there? Is there something else that we need to consider offering that area that maybe we're not offering that could draw more kids or bring more kids out on Saturday? Oh, I can get you that information.
Thank you. And then my, my, my last question is about, uh, equity in your department and talking about how you guys have been working through a lens of equity, where you are as far as the implementation. And then thinking about as we move forward, like, what do you think you will need from us and from, from a budget standpoint to make sure that we have, uh, opportunities of equitable access to recreation and parks programming in Baltimore?
I, I'll tell you, as we, I, I mentioned earlier about the STEM education opportunities. And one of the things we're doing in the pilot program is we've identified eight sites that we're going to roll that program out. You know, sometime this fall, just we're trying to follow the model and see what's happening with schools. But one of the things we did was we made sure that there, that equity was, was at the forefront of that decision. I feel that, you know, equity is a discussion that we're, we're continually trying to shape. I don't think equity is something, you know, the process is something that, that takes time to build and develop. But I, I am, I guess I can, you can say I'm, I'm not fully comfortable, but I, I can appreciate where we are and how we are starting to think about the decisions we make. Not only just from a equitable standpoint, but just, you know, making those decisions that sound for our community. And it's just not making decisions, but making them with some sense of strategy in place. We, we have an equity coordinator that's working closely with, with the Equity Office, who's Sierra Harris. And she has recently submitted the information. Sierra, can you expand a little bit more about the equity and where we are with the equity process?
Okay, um, yes. Good afternoon. So I recently submitted the equity report and I've been working with the Equity Office on how BCRP is becoming more intentional with the decisions we make for equity. We implemented a new capital process with our capital budget to ensure that we're looking at all areas in the city when allocating funds. And we've also been reviewing each division's budget request to make sure that it's equitable and each service that we have serves the community of Baltimore. So we're, we're becoming intentional and we are continuing to look at all of our processes to make sure that we're equitable. We're looking at programming and all of our services.
Thank you. And Director Sierra, I'll follow up directly with you guys for more. I'm done for Mr. Chair.
I thank you, Mr. President. So Director, getting back to, to my question, actually, the President took the words right out of my mouth. Regarding recreation in my district, we've been speaking about this since the first day we met. And every year I've been talking about it and I appreciate, you know, last year there was a little bit that was thrown my way. But, you know, really the, the children of the fifth district don't deserve peanuts, they, they, they're ready for the bacon. And so we need to do something a little more meaningful than just, you know, a party at a park. I mean, I've been hosting a community-wide free event for the kids since years before I even got into office, out of my pocket. And that draws out well over a thousand people. So, you know, we, we've been trying to compensate, but it's time that it's done on a real level. And I wanted to hear a little bit about this five-year plan, how, how that loops into it. As we know, well, now you're saying with the addition of two more assets, there's 45 assets across the city, zero of them in the fifth district. We don't even have a splash pad. And so where in this year's budget is there an opportunity to do something meaningful in my district?
Well, I'll, I'll start by stressing to you, I, I understand your concerns against, we've had conversations and in order to, to build a rec center, that is, on average, we only receive in capital funding roughly $7 million. This year, we were fortunate enough to receive $9 million. If you build a rec center, that will take that entire $9 million. That means that there's nothing else that will be improved that year. So I think what we have to do is look and see if there's strategies, if there's opportunities that we can collaborate and partner with, with other groups that's in the area. Is there, you know, some kind of, I think me and you had talked about the possibility of seeing how when the school system, when cross-country moves, goes back to its old space, is there an opportunity that we can bring some recreational opportunities into the Northwest High School? Currently, you know, as well as I do, the school system is not interested in that collaboration at this point in time because they have a school there. But when they, when that space is, you know, free, is there an opportunity there? So, I mean, I think it's something we have to try to look and address. And reference to our five-year plan, what that plan is doing is it's looking at all these different plans that we've created over the years. And we're working on a master plan to try to address where these different rec centers and try to just put some strategies together. Where, you know, how we can fund this, but at the same time, and, and when can we fund this? And then that way we can have good support because I, I get it, I hear your, your concerns, you know, about building a rec center there. But one, one of the things we are doing is trying to be more intentional. It's not, you know, we're not trying to do party in the parks, but we're, you know, last year we did do a STEM program and collaboration with the school there. So I think as in the immediate future, it's figuring out how we can collaborate with, with other spaces that's in the area to offer programs that may have buildings in place because I, I just don't see us building a, a rec center tomorrow. And that's just being as truthful as I can be.
All right. Well, two things on that. Number one, I think you're mixing up the locations, not Northwest High School. We've been talking about at the Old Police Training Academy where there's already some private youth programs run by the Baltimore Terps. At the old Training Academy on the corner of Northern Parkland and Park Heights, that facility is already empty and ripe for having some rec opportunities going on in the building. And number two, you mentioned about how there was $7 million last year, $9 million this year for, for capital projects. But I don't, I, I would be very surprised to hear that you guys ever pay for a rec center in cash upfront. I would assume that any center that's built would take a component of that and also have a down. You know, it would also have some debt service connected to that so that it would be paid off over time. So how much does it take upfront to build a rec center?
And Adam is on the call too, and I'll, I'll start this, I'll let Adam finish. But no, we, when we build a rec center, we have to have money in hand. So it's anytime we build a rec center, for example, the Middle Branch facility that we're getting ready to, to break ground on in the fall, they start securing funding for that facility in 2013 or 14. And it's a mixture of state funding, it's a mixture of multiple years of capital funding, it's a mixture of Baltimore Gateway Partnership that, that brought money to the table. So when you're building a capital project, you have to have the full amount in order to start a project. But Adam, am I missing anything? Is there something additional that you want to share about Councilman's, my first question about capital?
No, I think that was accurate. I mean, the, the funds need to be appropriated, whether they're grants or general funds, it needs to be in the CIP. And as Director Moore mentioned, it's usually a multi-year process just because of our, of our limited budget. It takes time to build up the capital for a project of that scale.
Right. And so I, I hear that and, you know, I've been asking for multiple years and every year I've been getting basically the exact same answer. And about the five-year plan, the answer I was just given is pretty much the same answer I was given last year. And in previous years, I was asked not to vote against the budget and that there would be something meaningful coming up as it pertains to rec for the children of the fifth district. And so now I'm kind of left in a, you know, in a difficult place where I have to decide as a member of the committee if I'm going to even vote this budget through, which I'm tempted not to strictly because the children in my district are being left behind and it's a struggle. And I think there's, there's some meaningful things that can be done, not just single events. I can, I can give an example off the top of my head. At one of the schools in my district, their playground is falling apart. And so, you know, doing something like that costs $100,000, something meaningful that at least it shows that a rec in parks is interested in servicing kids in the fifth district, which would also benefit that school during the school year. And so there, there's things that can be done. I just don't feel like there's been any movement from year to year and it's extremely concerning. And so I, I really would love to hear if there is something that could be done in the next couple of days that we can discuss and actually get a concrete answer on. So I'll leave that for now. The second thing I do want to say something positive, which is I, I want to publicly thank Adam Borman for the work that he's been doing on the trail project. I've probably been one of the largest thorns in Adam's side for the past few years. But I do want to thank him for working through all the difficulties with the trail project. You know, it's been a long time coming, so I do want to thank him for the work that he's doing on that and also for, for not giving up on us, even though we've been a thorn in his side. Did Adam leave or did he hear that?
I'm, I'm here. I, I appreciate that. That's very kind of you. I will mention that you mentioned the Pimlico Safety Academy and we have a capital project in the final stages of development to improve those fields and create walking paths and, and improve that. So I'm excited to do that for, for the district. And then follow up on the trail cutting through Northwest Park with additional improvements to that upper park area. You know, there's certainly more that we can do, but those, those two are on the immediate horizon.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, you know, but the stuff at Northwest Field, I mean, a lot of that is coming from like the community funds that were allocated there. I want to see rec in parks for the first time, I'm making investment in the fifth district. But I'll leave it, I'll leave it alone for, for the time being. I'm going to just scroll through here and go through the other council people for questions. Next one I have here is Councilman Henry. Do you have any questions?
I do. Thank you very much. And Councilman Schleifer, thank you so much for reminding me. We have, we've talked multiple times about the fact that your district has no rec center. And I was just adding that to a little personal list I'm keeping of things that come up in the hearings that we want to make sure we, we find some way to find the resources. Rec in Parks knows I love them. I know that they have been doing, you know, God's work for years, making more and more bricks with less straw. And so they know that my goal is always, how do we get them more straw? Because we'd love them to make more bricks. I'm, I'm looking at my list of questions and some of them I think were already touched on by the council president. I'm, I'm sorry, I was having some connection problems while you and he were having the exchange. Did he ask for the, the, the data point, the specific financial cost of, in a, in a regular non-COVID-19 summer, how much it would cost to provide pool access for free? And by that I mean, how much do we collect in a summer such that if we just didn't collect it? How much more would you need to make up that difference?
He did not ask that question, sir, and I'll, I'll let you know now, it's only five of our pools that we charge. None of our walk-to pools we, we charge. So we're, we will basically have to sit down with BBMR and discuss because that's fun and it goes back to the general fund. But I don't have that number off the top of my head of what we generate each year, but I can get you that number and what that difference is.
If you could get the committee that number, I, I'll make it very clear, I would like to see, you know, your budget increased by whatever that number is so that you don't have to ask kids for money when they're coming to the pools. For, for you, the pools, a public pool should be free. That's what makes it public and we are doing our citizens a disservice if we're not able to provide that at all of our pools. The, the next question is, are you still offering free soil, not, not wood chips, but free soil? And are you increasing the opportunity for, for communities and parks, friends groups and such to get that free soil for gardening purposes?
So I'm, I'm a yield a bill, but in the current state, we, we are not offering, I know we, we normally do wood chips and we've done soil. But, you know, until we get through the pandemic, this, because we want to not encourage community groups and, you know, larger groups to gather. But Bill, I, I know we're still providing wood chips, are we still providing soil to the different community groups?
No, unfortunately not. That's something that went away a few years ago during one of the budget cuts. I mean, we probably haven't delivered soil for a while for community groups. We provide it to our city farms locations, which are the community gardens on park property like at Deweze. But we don't make it available the way we used to for community groups and it's largely a kind of loading and delivery cost.
Okay, I, I think we can handle this offline then, but I, I will be reaching out to find out how, actually, if you can just add this to the list of numbers that you're sending back to the committee, how much would it cost to restore that service? Where you were able to provide soil to, to friends, friends groups and community groups? I get that you're providing it to community gardens on park property. So there, that may be, that, it may, it may be that what we're asking for isn't that much more than what you're already doing. But I, I would love to have that, that data. And Mr. Chair, that's technically two questions. So I'm happy to wait for the next round to ask the rest of mine.
And Councilman, if I could just add to kind of, give a shout out to what we're doing with the forestry division down at Camp Small. It's not technically soil, but it is fine organic matter, which is great for gardening. And it's a byproduct of our forestry wood reutilization project, project. So we have it to give away and we'd love to put it in the hands of urban farmers and gardeners across the city.
That, that sounds great and that is something that I know I personally wasn't aware of. If, if Jenny could send us a blurb on that, what we'd be happy to do is circulate that among our communities and find out if, if that would address the, the need that we've been reached out to about. I'd be happy to, to, to help boost the signal on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me one second, please.
I mean, I can keep asking questions. I'm good with that.
Nope, nope, that won't be asked a second. Thank you for the offer, Councilman. Director, one of the things that, that we had worked on together, and I thought it was a huge win for, for our city was, as part of the budget negotiations, we came up with this concept that each council district, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you. Now you're buffering.
How's that?
Yes.
Okay, each council district would get a basketball court and/or tennis court. I know that I intentionally held off until asking for that until a week or two ago, so I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I didn't expect you to turn that around in, you know, two weeks. But I wanted to just run through each of the, each of the 14 districts. And I believe at the time, let's start with the first district, so that's Cohen. And I don't know who was, if Adam Borman.
So, so, so.
Will you need to take that or?
Well, I'm just going to give a quick overview and then I'll turn it over to you, Bill. Councilman, if, as you recall, we, we had to go through procurement. It took us a while to get the agreement through procurement to secure a company to do all our res servicing. Now have a contract with them and we have the different courts that are, that are in different stages. And I think I'll turn it over to Bill and he can probably just give you the, the rundown on each one of the districts. But I think we have finished the court in District 13 and I can't think of another court. But Bill, if you'll just kind of give the, where we are with the different courts.
Thank you, Director. And Bill, if you could just, I, I'll just name the district and if we can go through, let me know if it's tennis or basketball. If the request has come in, where, you know, what the specific request is and what the status is. So let's start with the first district, which is Cohen.
And Mr. Chair, just to add, I don't know if, I can't see on my thing right now, if Councilman McCray is on there. But the director also knows for the second district, it was neither, it was like one of the little soccer court things.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, so Cohen, I think we're trying to choose between O'Donnell Heights and Joseph Lee. Yeah. So Cohen, I think we're, um, trying to choose between O'Donnell Heights and Joseph Lee. I think we need, uh, maybe feedback from him on which of those two we want to do. And I know Jenny might jump in on some of this, but those are the, those are the two there. And I don't believe we have a quote for that one yet.
We just got the quotes this morning.
Okay, fantastic.
Okay. So for, for each of these, uh, what I'm going to ask is, um, Matt, um, if you can send an email to each of the respective council members, um, if there is. Actually, no.
Can I try to interrupt you for just a minute? We got the list already. And, um, Bill has the quotes where they are and in where they are in the procurement process.
But, but it sounds like Cohen hasn't decided which one he wants yet.
He sent both of those. He sent both of those options. So we got the quotes and then we're going to get back with him to figure out which of the two based on condition is going to happen.
So you're going to handle the follow up.
So we have this list already.
Okay. So McCray, McCray is getting a soccer pitch?
Right. She wants a, uh, as the council president said, that they want a soccer pitch. We've put it, we've partnered with US Soccer and Target, uh, through a donation. And we've added soccer pitches throughout the city. So now what we have to do is secure, uh, the contract and figure out how we can, can we partner with US Soccer and do the exact same thing. But yes, she has identified, uh, one of the tennis courts. She will let it turn into a soccer pitch.
Okay, got it. Third district, Dorsey.
Uh, North Harford Basketball.
Okay. And is that, what's the status on that one?
The, uh, quotes, the requisitions just got put in like yesterday.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman.
Thank you. If I may comment on this, um, I, I don't have any confirmation from, uh, from Wreckin Parks. For all the times that we've discussed this, I don't have any confirmation so far that we're on the same page. Um, we've been, been just, uh, I, I, I began asking Wreckin Parks long before last year's budget about converting the tennis courts there into additional basketball courts. That's my request there. Um, and I want to make sure that, that we're crystal clear that that's the request. It's not, because there's a basketball court there and, and I'm not asking that the basketball court simply be resurfaced. I am asking that Wreckin Parks fix the, the rim there because it's a, it's the only, it's the only full court basketball court. Mile ground.
Yeah, Councilman, I, I got you. So the, the rim getting repaired is something totally different as standard maintenance director. If you could see to it that that room gets repaired like in the next week or two, is it a reasonable timeframe?
Yeah. One's a half a foot lower than the other.
Okay. All right. That's, that's easy as maintenance. Are we on the same page in terms of what Councilman Dorsey's request was?
Um, I hear it loud and clear now. I can go look at the quote. I know the quote's for $52,000. Depending on the shape of the existing basketball court, they might've quoted on the existing basketball court as opposed to turning the two tennis courts into basketball courts. It sounds like a low number to turn tennis courts into basketball courts. So my guess is that they didn't give us a quote for the work that the Councilman requested. But we.
Yeah, I want to be clear. I, I've been explicit about this request for longer, you know, for much more than a year. And over the last year, I have on a couple of occasions sent drawings explicitly making clear what I was asking for. If, if, if it, if we got a misquote here because somebody missed the, the point here, I guess I'd like to know how that, that doesn't happen again in the future in other cases.
Councilman, you have a valid point.
Okay, fourth district.
Fourth district.
Please, Bill, I'm sorry. Please make sure you circle up with Councilman Dorsey before the end of the day tomorrow, if you would.
I, oh, that Bill, sorry.
Yeah. Mullen Park Basketball.
Okay. What's the status of that?
Uh, that one, there's about 10 of these. The requisitions all just got put in like two days ago.
Okay. So when the requisition gets put in, what's, what's the timeframe from when that gets put in? It's when the project's completed?
As soon as, uh, the requisition gets put in, then BBMR approves it. Then it goes to the Bureau of Purchasing, purchasing issues a release, the vendor's notified and the vendor can start work.
So a month?
Everybody's on their Ps and Qs. The vendor can have a release in a matter of days.
Oh, okay. And then it probably takes a week to do the job?
Oh, no. I mean, the vendor, you know, will have to tell him which ones we want to get done first. I don't think he could jump on all 12 courts at the same time. But if he knows he has 12 courts of business lined up, I imagine he'll just move from court to court to court, depending on his capacity and what jobs he has lined up for other clients.
Okay, got it. Fifth district, Schleifer.
Fifth district, Schleifer. Jump in here, Jenny. I, I don't have that on my sheet right here.
Jump in if you'd like.
Go ahead. Councilman?
Yeah. So, um, for my district, what, uh, what we found is that we don't have, um, these assets. So we couldn't resurface something that doesn't exist. And, um, so once we discovered that, we started looking at things. Jenny was very helpful. Um, in trying to work through what I had requested at the time was to build a, a new basketball court. Since we didn't have one to begin with, um, we started looking at those costs and those costs seemed to be cost prohibitive, uh, based on the allocation that was left available. And so, um, Jenny had brought up a great idea, which, which I'm in full support of, uh, which would be to allocate that money towards, uh, the playground at the Fallstaff School. The Fallstaff School, uh, is in, uh, the most, uh, in my district, also home to the largest immigrant population, um, in my district. And so those kids over there have zero other, they don't have swing sets at their houses. They don't have really anything else to do but play on that playground. The current one that's at the Fallstaff School, it's an elementary, uh, middle. The current one that was there is actually, uh, a project that I was helping with together, um, uh, a long time ago as a president of the Fallstaff Neighborhood Association and got partners to the table to build that there with some of the community groups and other, uh, film, thop, thopic partners. But now that, um, that whole, uh, playset is falling apart. It was wood and so kids are getting splinters, um, and that whole thing needs to come down and be rebuilt. So that's where we're at with, with that. But certainly we need an additional allocation, which I'd love to get this year to complete that project, uh, before that school reopens, uh, uh, you know, next season.
Council Schleifer, isn't Luton Park in your district? It has a tennis court and a basketball court there that could use resurfacing.
Um, no, it can't. Have you, have you been there recently?
Yes, sir. I was there last week.
Was there?
We can talk, we, we can talk about it and I can meet you out there.
Any, anytime you'd like. I live around the block from you.
Okay. I know.
So, so let's, let's, what, what do you guys think about the playground? I mean, as far as allocating that since you don't want to, um, all right, we'll discuss it offline.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's.
Yeah, we've had, we've had two meetings with Kaboom. Adam's been talking to them about this, about using their fundings for the surface over there because the courts at Luckman were in pretty good shape. But yeah, we can talk about it later.
Yeah.
Okay. Sixth district, Middleton.
Uh, Towanda Basketball.
Okay. Requisition?
Yes.
All right. Seventh district, Pinkett.
Uh, Medfield Recreation Center Basketball.
All right. Eighth district, Burnett. I'm assuming these are all requisition unless you say otherwise.
Um, yeah. Stokes Park Playground Basketball. And that one is actually a little bit further ahead in the process.
Sure that's not in the 12th district?
I'm pretty sure.
No, tough crowd I meant, because Councilman Stokes, 12th district. Okay.
Oh, got you. Now Burnett. Okay. Nine Shipley Hill Basketball.
All right. Tenth district.
Tenth district. It says, uh, to be determined.
We've been waiting for Councilman Risinger. I've talked to him as recently as last week. I've asked him a number of times, but he's working on it. Trying to figure out what he wants.
Uh, Nina, can you make sure you give Councilman Risinger extra encouragement? So, thank you. Uh, 11th district, Costello. What do you got?
Um, well, we have a quote for Solo Gibbs, but before we jump into renovating the basketball court down there, we were approached, I believe the director or Karen were approached by the Washington Capitals about also doing something on the basketball court. So we want to make sure we merge and don't duplicate efforts down there.
So my request was for one of the tennis courts. So we, at Solo Gibbs, we have one basketball court underneath the interstate. And then we have two, um, that's on the southern half of the park. And then we have two tennis courts in the northern half of the park. So you're saying both of those, you had that down as basketball?
Yes, I did.
Okay. I definitely want tennis.
Okay.
We'll change that. That was what was given to us. So we'll switch it.
Yeah. I mean, I sent an email to you guys like a week ago to the director.
The 12th district is Councilman Stokes and he's the other outstanding request. Um, that's the basketball court at Clifton Park. And that, I believe has a, uh, the paperwork's all in for that one.
So it's on the list? It's going to get done?
Yes, yes, Councilman, it will.
In our life?
By the end of the summer.
Cool. Thank you. That's great.
Okay. And the 14th district?
Oh, I think we just covered the 14th.
Sorry, guys.
It's, it's the 10, it's the, it's basketball court just north of, um.
Rita Church.
Absolutely. Under the. Overpass and right there.
In the shade, which is why it's one of my favorites.
Oh, yeah. It's going to be so nice.
And did we cover 13? Was, was I gone for that?
You didn't.
Okay. So Elwood is actually done. I think they just finished up a week or so ago.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go back to questions. Vice President Middleton, do you have any questions? Okay, I'm going to cycle through to some other council members. Councilmember Shannon Snee. I don't have any questions at this sound. Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, um, uh, to the director and your team for the amazing work that you do. Um, day in and day out. Um, wanted to jump in. Sorry, I was, wouldn't expect you to be up right now. But, um, first question I had was about, uh, Service 646, um, playground maintenance. Uh, I know we, we've spoken a, a, a lot about this, Director. Um, and I know that it does indicate here that, uh, there has been, uh, the hiring of staff for playground maintenance or the playground surveys. Um, so one, just wanted to see if someone in your team could provide us an update on where they are in that, uh, assessment of the, all of the playground citywide. Uh, I know that playground maintenance is a huge concern for a number of my neighborhoods. Um, and so where are, where are we with the assessment? And, um, and then again, I guess moving towards making sure that we, uh, all of the playgrounds, uh, have, uh, functional components. Um, and that you're reaching the, the goal of 92%.
Thanks, Councilmember Burnett, for your continued support, uh, as well as, uh, we have hired Ashley, who is our playground coordinator, and she is assessing the playgrounds. She has created a list of our project playgrounds. I don't have that in front of me. And it's, it's the areas of playgrounds where on a scoring system have scored the lowest. Uh, that definitely needs a lot of attention. As you know, we have over 130 playgrounds in our city. And unfortunately, there hasn't been a strong strategy of, of a program around replacing, upgrading and repairing playgrounds. And so it is another one of those areas. As we finish this assessment, it would give us a broad picture of the severity and how much monies need to be invested. Um, but of course we'll have to use the ranking system to determine how we, uh, uh, you know, attack each playground. Um, it's, it's something that we share every year in our capital budget. Uh, when we do our capital presentation about just maintenance alone, our agency need roughly about, uh, $20,000, that's approximate, just to maintain some of our infrastructures throughout our, our city. So of course, you know, we're not receiving that in capital. But, uh, Bill, is there any additional information that I share as far as more so the efficiency? I know Ashley had, had reached, you know, assessed quite a few playgrounds, but I'm not sure if she had the 85% threshold that's, that's on this target.
Um, I don't believe so. I think if David is on, he can probably speak to how many of them she's put her eyes on. And maybe David, you also want to mention the app that she's now using so that we can make the process more efficient. Dave, are you on?
I, I don't see Dave on the call.
Okay. Um, so I believe Ashley is half to three quarters of the way through looking at all the playgrounds. And we've outfitted her with a new app so that she can get all the data and save it quickly. Um, I'll have to get back to you with exactly where she is.
We, we lost Bill, but, um, sounds like, uh, Councilman, what we can do is we'll get your follow-up response and, and, and let you know the target and how many playgrounds we assess for the new, that new app is, is going to make us more efficient.
Uh, and I guess a, a request, uh, for myself and my colleagues is when, when that's completed, uh, could you provide us, um, the reports for each of our, the playgrounds in each of our districts? So that we have a, a better understanding as well where, uh, where all of them rank and what the priority.
Yes, sir. We can. I'm making notes now. We can provide that.
Uh, and the second question I had, uh, was, uh, for Service, uh, 654, which is, um, the urban forestry. Um, uh, one of the divisions I talked to a lot, especially with so much park space in my district and just want to shout them out. Um, very appreciative of all the hard work. I know I send probably an inordinate amount of requests. I don't know where I, where I shape up with the rest of the council, but I do know we talk a lot. Um, I, I, I was, uh, I did note that, uh, in the budget book, it does seem to reflect a, a small increase to that service. Um, but just wanted to get a better understanding. I know one of the challenges that the division has with tree maintenance, down trees, uh, that kind of thing. Um, is, is the increase, where, where are we, I guess, in being able to really, uh, fulfill the needs to do park maintenance and tree maintenance? Is this budget level adequate? Uh, uh, um, I know every agency director, uh, isn't, is always going to say anymore. But I guess if you could blink twice and let me know, uh, if there is a real need for more to, to better maintain our, um, our forest, uh, urban forest, urban park spaces, which are very important to the, the people in my district, um, with having the, the largest urban forest in, in the city, uh, in Lincoln, Wentz, Walton, Lincoln Park, taking up a significant portion of my district. Uh, is this adequate or, and what do we really need to get to, to, to better maintain our urban forest?
I'm going to start and then I'm going to, uh, ask Eric to, to finish up. But we, um, realize that there, we still have a large, uh, SR backlog of, of, uh, dead trees, trees that need to be removed. Uh, one of the things we, we did do is we, we spoke with, uh, Cheryl Goldstein from the mayor's office as well as. from the mayor's office, as well as Henry Raymond. We, we talked about a request that we was gonna put in for this year's budget. And I hope, you know, if it was funded, would help us take care of the backlog of, of SRS. But unfortunately, uh, COVID has hit, so I'm pretty sure additional funding, you know, won't be allocated in this year's budget. But Eric, you want to talk a little bit about that funding request that we asked this year and where we are with trees?
Uh, yeah, I'll, excuse me, I'll, I'll echo Reginald's, uh, comments, um, Councilman. Um, it's about 1.2 million, to put a figure on it, to re- remove our backlog of tree pruning and, uh, tree removals that my urban foresters have confirmed from the SRS that our actual work needs to be done. That will get rid of the backlog and keep the backlog away, at least into the next fiscal year. So, our, for example, we are removing trees. We, we go based on the date of the request, chronological order, unless it's a real hot item or a asterisk tree. We're, we're removing and pruning trees from fall and winter of last year. So, we're like, you know, we're four to six months backlog, and that's more than I want to see. So, it would take more money to address those service requests. I would like to add, though, something that, um, city council has approved in the past, and we're very appreciative of the administration, is we now have a proactive pruning program, which I don't talk a lot about because everybody will want it done in their districts. So, we're trying to make it a social equity item. But we spend at least half a million a year targeting neighborhoods, uh, based on a number of factors, including goods, the amount of, uh, trees in poor condition and what have you. And we don't wait for service requests. What we do is we take that and we prune every tree in that neighborhood that needs it, or removes it if it's dead or dying. And I think that has contributed to the downswing in the amount of, uh, service requests. We've gotten probably about, oh, 6,6,500 for the last two years annually. And that is down from what we used to get. Uh, that doesn't include urgency. Um, and so, we're headed the right direction. So, even though we need more money, and I, I agree with, though, with Director Moore, uh, we also want to keep some of that money and keep doing proactive work. Because that will lessen, it's, it's been shown to lessen where we do a neighborhood with proactive pruning, where we come in and don't wait for SRS. Uh, the amount of service requests we get in the, in the following subsequent years decreases between 25 and 40%. So, on one hand, yes, we need more money, like we all like to say. But on the other hand, we're doing some proactive work, and I, I would like city council to continue to support that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, those are my two. I'll wait for the next round.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Director Moore, I had a question. Um, I believe there's a provision in the charter regarding a parks advisory board or a parks board. Is that correct?
A, a parks advisory, uh, board, yes, but, uh, that's something that the mayor wants. Yes, sir.
Right. Um, what are your views on that? I mean, that, that has been, I don't know the right word, defunct, not operating, uh, for some time. Do you think that would be of any value?
I think it's something that we need to look at and, and make sure that, uh, we'll look at a charter and, and define what's the purpose of the advisory board. I, I mean, there, there's positive to having an advisory board. I just think clearly defining the roles and responsibilities of the board. Also, a lot of advisory boards are, they, they actually go out and help secure additional funding when agencies are short. They're also advocates for the agencies when there's things that's needed in the, in the agency. So, there's, there's value to the advisory boards. I just think we just need to make sure that the roles and responsibilities are defined, and we identify individuals that can be advocates and support the mission, vision, where we're going as an agency.
Okay, I'm gonna take a look in the charter, and I'm gonna circle back with a question on that in a few minutes. Um, Councilwoman McCray, have you gone yet?
I think I wanted to, to touch on it, um, something a council member Burnett spoke about, which was the urban forestry. Um, I see that we have five new positions, and you may have already spoken about it when you did your presentation. Um, what are those five new positions? What exactly are those, um, city work is gonna be doing?
So, let me clarify. It says five new positions is five new FTEs. These are five individuals that was in contract positions that we, uh, use additional contract fund. As it says, the contract personnel spending was reduced by 330,000. That's on urban foresters. So, it's, it's not physically new bodies. It's just creating FT positions, full-time, um, equivalents. That's not on contract.
Okay, thanks so much for clarifying that for me. So, I want to go to, it's gonna be Recreation for Seniors, Service 651. So, I may need clarification on this as well. Um, it's saying that we have an additional $200,000, so we have $200,000 in the general funds for the creation of new senior recreation program. And, um, can you speak, can you speak or just provide more information about what that new program in would be or what you guys are thinking about for that new program?
So, this $200,000 was, uh, something that Mayor Young, uh, got, informed me that he was gonna, he wanted to continue to find ways to support seniors. And so, what we can, we're gonna do with this $200,000 in the general fund is continue to look at where we have what we call, uh, gaps of, of service for seniors. And what Lesley would do is expand and offer more of the Golden Age, which are, are part-time or, you know, part-day senior programs that operate out of senior, I'm sorry, out of rec centers. And also, she will, uh, continue to look at ways that she can expand, um, her senior program. When you look at the senior budget, you look at a half a million dollars compared to the amount of seniors. I mean, you know, it's, we're, we're grateful and thankful for, you know, every dollar that's allocated, but, um, there is a, a large population of seniors, and you're operating on a half a million dollar budget. So, I think what she has to do is to be creative with that budget and making sure that the, the funding is allocated, and she can buy the supplies that's needed to offer programming. But also, instead of spending manpower, is creating more of these Golden Age, um, sites that she can offer senior program. And, and I can get you, if you want a more breakdown of how we're gonna spend, allocate this $200,000, I can get that to you. I don't have that in front of me. I don't know what it is, expanding senior services.
Can you provide it to the committee? Thank you.
Uh, did we do, we did, did we do Councilwoman Clark yet? She seems to be missing from her seat. Uh, we did Burnett. Uh, we did Henry. Uh, Vice President Middleton, did we do you yet?
Um, yeah, no, but I, I don't have any questions. I just want to, um, thank Wrenckin Parks for, um, the way you have been, uh, working hard to be a partner in this, uh, COVID pandemic. And, um, I, I had a briefing some time ago within my district, so, um, I'm all good. So, thank you all again for the things that you continue to do for the youth in our city with what you have to work with. And, um, I'm always there to help any way I can. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we've done Middleton, we've done McCray, we've done Henry. We'll come back to Clark. We did, uh, Council President Scott. Um, we have done Schleifer, we've done Burnett. Um, I did one question. I'm gonna follow up on that right now. We did not, Dorsey, we did not do you yet, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the second half of my question. I'm gonna go to Councilman Dorsey, and then the President, uh, Snead. We didn't do you yet either? Councilwoman Snead?
I'm okay. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, we're gonna do Costello, uh, Dorsey, and then if Mary Pat's back, we'll, we'll do Clark. If not, we'll go to the President. Uh, so, Director, I pulled up the language in the charter. Um, I'm gonna read it because it's only a sentence law. Uh, there is a Board of Recreation and Parks, which shall advise the Director and exercise those other powers and perform those other duties prescribed by law. And then it says, "The composition shall be seven people deemed capable by reason of character, education, intelligence, experience, commitment to conservation, environmental protection, promoting public recreation, parks, and music for the people of Baltimore City." Um, so seeing as this isn't terribly defined based on what's in the charter, um, and seeing that, you know, if the board were appointed, you would likely be working very closely with them. It would probably have, um, you know, would be the key voice that, that, um, you know, they would be, or specifically the mayor would be listening to in terms of, you know, what their, um, scope is. Um, would, let's go back to my original question. Would this be something that, you know, you would, you would be receptive to or, or something that you would have concerns with?
I mean, I, I, I don't have any of the, I mean, I've, I've talked to our, our staff multiple times about just some of the background and the history. And, and what I've, I've heard from our staff is that there was times where the board was active, but near the, the end of the, the previous board, they start falling off. It wasn't, they wasn't coming to a lot of the meetings. So, I think it's something that we'll have to definitely look at and make sure that, as you read, I mean, it's, it's pretty, you know, it's not a lot of details about the role and responsibilities of the board. But, uh, just working with the mayor and, and trying to find, uh, the role of the board and making sure that we can find individuals that can continue to help support the mission and vision of where we're going as an agency. Um, and also can be advocates, and also find, you know, uh, on a lot of boards, there's boards that can help fi- fundraise and find additional funds to support your, your agency. So, I mean, I, I think all those things are important as we continue to move forward as an agency and, and we reshape our direction. So, I'm, I'm not saying no to a server. I just think we really need to find the role and find some really innovative individuals that, that's advocates of, of where we're trying to go as an agency.
Understood. Um, well, I hope we can, uh, and I know you've always been willing to talk at any hour, hour of the day. I, I hope that we can continue to talk about that and, and envision what that could look like, uh, and what that group could bring to the table for the city, specifically for, for this department. Um, I look forward to having those conversations. Uh, Councilman Dorsey, you are up, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may comment on that last question of yours. Um, my reading of the charter doesn't leave any room for boards that are supposed to exist to not exist. It requires explicitly that any board that exists must convene at least once per year. So, just my thought on that.
No, that, that makes all the sense in the world. And I think, you know, we can work with the mayor and the next mayor to, to figure out, um, how, how we can bring a, a group of people that, um, have that type of experience and connections and just help the department continue to move forward. I mean, I think the department's been moving in a very positive direction since Director Moore has been here. I've seen, you know, incredible improvement, and, you know, we just want to see that continue. So, I think, I think we're on the same page, right, Councilman?
Yes, I'm sure that there are plenty of people. I, I know that I've been contacted on a number of occasions by people who, uh, have asked about the status of the board and who would surely be willing to contribute.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, I'm glad that we covered the, um, matter of this basketball court. It's been, um, on my mind, and I know that I've brought it up a number of times. And I, and I received an email from Jenny, um, that Bill has CC'd on, so I will be following up with, uh, what they asked for. Um, I, I, I've been waiting for some stream banks to get fixed in my district for like a year and a half now. They're collapsed. We have sections of recreational trail that have had to be closed or diverted because of unsafe conditions, um, in common public area. And it just, um, I, I know I got an update about it not too long ago, um, that basically said everything that we had thought was going to happen is no longer going to happen. And I, I'm unclear about what the status of this is, but there's two sections of trail in Herring Run Park that are dangerously, uh, falling over. And it just seems completely unreasonable that, you know, basically, two years later, I'm still looking for this to get restored into a safe and stable condition.
Councilman Dorsey, I, I hear your concerns, and, and I mean, it's, it's concerning to us, too. We just recently repaired the Shannon Drive, uh, site, which, uh, was losing parts of the trail. Uh, but the, the area that you're talking-
There are still three sections of Jersey wall just sitting in the park there that need to be removed.
Um, but also, um, area that you're, you're, you're talking about right now is the area that's near the replacement of the bridge with DOT. And I'm, I'm, I was, I was CC'ing an email recently from DOT, and I'm gonna yield to Adam Borman. He can tell you where we are. We have gotten approval for an emergency, um, to start there. So, I'll, I'll let Adam kind of share, share it light with you where, where we are. But we have been working closely with our, our other agencies and DOT. But, Adam, you want to talk a little bit more in detail exactly what's happening there?
Yeah, I certainly can. Um, Councilman, as you know, we, we've worked with MDE. We've worked with our engineers on developing a solution. Uh, we've been trying to find the best avenue of quickly procuring that work, uh, one being a blanket contract with, uh, allied contractors, uh, through DOT. I contacted DOT and asked them to help me push that through. And, um, while they're, they're willing to help me with that, their, their concern is that it conflicts with their work on the bridge. They have certain stream diversion set up for the bridge work, and for us to then be right next to them, working in the wet, uh, be an issue. Um, I feel like there's gotta be a solution to this, so I'm gonna keep working with them. Um,
I mean, these, these, these are, we're talking about 200 to 300 yards away from that bridge. There's no potential for a conflict of space in, at lea-, at least in terms of the workman, the, 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 the actual work that needs to take place. And let me remind that, like, I was very clear about bringing that potential conflict to Wrenckin Parks' attention two years ago before the bridge work, uh, even began. I was very, very clear of the urgency of trying to address it because access was going to be impeded by, um, the bridge work. And so, at this point, two years later, I just figure Wrenckin Parks should have just realized that whatever access issues there might be, they're gonna have to figure it out anyway. And it's just, you know, we're sitting here two years later, and I guess what I'm hearing is you still don't have a plan. I hear you saying DOT is willing to work, but like, we still have like ambiguity in the answer.
We have, we have a plan, and I have the contractor that I can get procured. I just need to coordinate how to get them into the site and do so within parameters of MDE and, and stormwater management, erosion, and all that good stuff. Um, but, you know, I'm not, I want to make excuses. This is something that we are learning about. We are not familiar with working in the water. Um, I really reckon Parks' strong suit. Um, and one, are you looking closer to charter that it might be that responsibility of another agency?
So, what Adam is saying, sir, is that, that we have a plan. We've, we've gotten approval from our finance department to do an, an emergency, uh, PO. Uh, we have a contract identified, but it's still, we have to work with our DOT because it is their, they, they've deemed that area as part of the construction site. So, that's, that's the key component that we, we're still working with them. And that was an email that they sent to us earlier this week. So, it's, it's not like we're trying to delay it. We're trying to figure out how we can get the contractors in, into that, like, location.
What happened?
Not sure. Well, I responded, so I think maybe Councilman Dorsey had some connection problems.
All right, we'll come back to Dorsey. All right, we'll come back to Dorsey. Uh, is Mary Pat, Councilwoman Clark? Okay, Council President Scott. Okay, Councilman Dorsey, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry. My computer shut down and without warning and now I'm back. I appreciate it. Sorry about that.
Sorry. So Councilman Dorsey, did you hear my response about, uh, us? It's, it's not that we don't have a plan. It's not that we don't have a contract. It's not that we haven't gotten approval from finance to move forward. Emergency PO is us now working with DOT since it's their construction site to allow our contract to get in to fix that, that section of the trail. Um, but we wanna get that section of the trail fixed. It's not that we don't wanna get it done. And that's what Adam was trying to say is that we're having to work with DOT.
Uh, do you have any sense at all of a timeline here?
Adam, uh, uh, sounds like, I mean, Adam, how, how's it going with DOT? Do they, does it sound like they're gonna give us the, the, um, um, right of entry so we can get the contract in, into that area?
Not on the, the level of personnel that I'm working with. It's gonna need to probably get to director's level to figure this out.
Let me, let me tell you how ridiculous that sounds to me for just one second here. Is that I brought this project to the attention of Wreckin Parks, months and months and months before that bridge project began, warning that the bridge project would create access problems. And then, a month into that bridge project, Wreckin Parks came to me and said, "The contractor is now asking for permission to close off the right of entry along this bridge." And we, me and Wreckin Parks, made a clear understanding that, sure, but in exchange, we need to make sure that they help us out with this stream bank restoration. And a year and a half later, I'm told, "No, they're not gonna help us with the stream bank restoration." And here today, I'm hearing, not only are they not helping us with the stream bank restoration, but they're not even gonna let us pass through their construction site? That Wreckin Parks had to give them permission to close off in the first place? And like, let me tell you how ridiculous that sounds to me. Who do I need to call? What do I, what do I need to do? What is, what does somebody need to do to get the obstacles out of your way here?
I will, I will talk to, uh, Director Sharkey, uh, this afternoon. As soon as this, this hearing is over, I will give him a call and see if we can get our team and his team together as, as quick as possible, uh, so that we can figure out how we can move through this. If there's any, uh, also we may have to bring somebody from the law department to help us work through this. But I will get you a, a follow-up, uh, of where we are and how we can move around this and get around this. I, I think now it just sounds like me and, uh, Director Sharkey needs to be in the conversation.
Okay, I think that I've taken up more than my two questions, Chair, uh, at this point, uh, but I would gladly, uh, have the Chair come back to me.
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilwoman Clark, have you gone yet?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for all your wonderful work. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to, um, uh, I wanna thank Mr. Borman and, and the Director and all involved, um, about, and I just wanted to ask about the status of the playing field that's being developed by Wreckin Parks that we kind of added to. In other words, as you remember, we're trying to, you all have kindly agreed, Wreckin Parks, to add to your original plan and funding, um, some accoutrements that will complement the athletic programs, um, at the, at the new, at, at the high school next door, which has relocated from Lake Clifton High School site, um, down to, uh, the park and, uh, Harford Road. Um, you all know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes, ma'am. You're talking about the Rita, Rita Church, uh, athletic-
Yeah, Rita Church, right across the street, Sanlo, from Rita Church. Um, and there were, so what happened was, um, we didn't get a stadium for the, for, um, the, the new rehab school, high school. But we've been working with Wreckin Parks and the Department of Education to try to get the money from education to Wreckin Parks so that that park can be developed as planned, but have some extra features like a, a, a practice running, uh, track, um, storage facilities, some extra bleachers, so that it can be used also by the Reach High School for some of its athletic activities. And I just wanted to know where it stands in terms of the funding and the schedule. And I thank you for really being patient with everyone while we tried to get this together. Um, and I know you had to delay the development of your original plan. Thank you. Where are we?
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. I, we have been working with the schools, uh, to work through the funding, uh, strategy and getting MOUs in place. I'm going to ask, uh, Jacia Smith to speak. She's the one who's been working directly with them to get, uh, that paperwork done. Uh, so Jacia, can you highlight that? And then after that, Adam, if you can just tell the Councilwoman the timeline of, uh, us getting this project started?
Sure. Good afternoon, everybody. So we have been working with the schools on the project. There has been a change, uh, to the project. We originally were adding storage spaces and bathrooms. Um, the schools have had some funding changes.
Yes.
The school has some funding changes. So I believe we have, um, taken those bathrooms and storages back out. But Adam can speak more to the design changes. So we originally, um, pulled back our projects to allow for the addition, but some, uh, funding challenges have, uh, faced the project from the school side. So there's been some additional changes.
So basically, um, I didn't know about that. I know I've been involved.
Yes.
Uh, but I did not know that you, the design changed. This, should I ask Mr. Borman to kind of talk about that?
Yes. The changes have happened since COVID hit.
What?
The, the changes occurred-
Yeah, since COVID has been affecting us, so the changes came, I believe towards the end of March. So we retained the seating, but we took out the bathrooms and the storage spaces because the schools can no longer support that additional cost for the project.
And what is that cost?
Uh, Borman, I mean, Adam, do you have any, uh?
I don't have that in front of me. Um, we can certainly-
Oh, man. Why didn't any, look, I've been involved in this thing at every level of it with every agency. Um, and I've also been active in trying to get the money that the additions, that you need for the additions. And I did not know that it was like zeroed out or reduced and that things have been eliminated that we talked about. And so you're saying the storage area, Ms. Smith, oops?
Yes.
Bridge area and what else?
And the bathroom. So our position, it hasn't changed. So our funding has remained static throughout the project.
Yes.
Schools didn't inform us that they are not able to move forward with those two additions. So we are continuing to keep the additional seating and, uh, the track around the field, but both the bathrooms and the storage units have been removed.
What about the track?
Uh, the track is remaining.
What about the scoreboard?
Yeah, all, all that. It's basically just the restrooms and the storage facility. Um, we are still making accommodations. Uh, it's been located so that when funding becomes available, either through us or through schools, that can be done at a later phase. Um, but at this point, we wanna keep this project moving and get it built.
What's the price tag on, uh, what you took out?
Um, don't have that in front of me. It's probably four or 500,000.
The whole thing was, how mu- so the whole addition was about $2 million, I believe. Isn't that correct? The part, the school system part?
I believe so.
Bleachers, the, they, um, the storage, the bathrooms, the scoreboard.
So Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, what we can get for the committee is, I'll get Adam to get the breakdown of what was additions with the school system and what, what was the dollar amount that was removed from the, from the restrooms and storage so that we can, I don't want us to give you inaccurate information.
Okay, that's fair enough. And I don't wanna tie this up with one project, but it's just something so much of us, so many of us work so hard on to try to make it work out. So you're about, I don't know, some amount of money short, right?
Yes, from the school's addition. So I think it's important that there was a school's funding that changed. So our original-
I know. Yeah. Uh, I, that was about $2 million. And I can't remember, a, a lot of that was contingency funds, like 300,000 of that. But, but basically you don't have the money to do the storage and, and bathrooms?
Correct.
We have a scoreboard up there with the, though?
Yes.
Yes, the scoreboard is still there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um, for, please keep in touch with me. This is a big deal. Real big deal.
So Adam, let's, let's get those, that, that information, uh, to the committee.
Thank you, though, for, um, working with us and trying to hold things up until we got that money. I know they got the 40,000 for the redesign, correct? You got that?
Adam, we, we've gotten the money for the consultant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we-
Now you have to redesign without the bathroom and the storage? Or can you redesign to make room for what you're not putting in to come in without major, um, problems later?
Yes, that's the approach. We're, we're planning for a future, future phase.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and thank you for all your patience with us while we managed not to be able to do this. Please keep in touch with me on this.
Okay.
We will.
Council President Scott?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, uh, Mr. Director, I just wanna go back to that, that project so that we can have a follow-up on it. But also, uh, in reference to the track, because it's being built for a high school, I think I may have, uh, mentioned this to you guys before, uh, that, that if we're gonna build a high, a track for a high school, we actually should make sure that they'll be able to use it for competition.
Yeah. It was, well, Mr. President, it was-
Hold on for a second, Councilwoman. And to that end, like, that's why I, I had mentioned to them, and I know we're too far down the path to both schools and Wreckin Parks, uh, Councilwoman, that, that there already was at one time, as you know, a actual track literally adjacent to the school and, 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 and adjacent basically to Rita Church where we could have built this facility. And as we move forward in the future, we have to, to make sure that we're coordinating in a better way because, uh, given, given a high school, uh, track that they use, basically is just a waste of money, uh, to make sure that-
I know.
Yeah. Um, my, my question for you, next question for you, Mr. Director, is around, uh, Service 647, uh, youth and adult sports. And I have a couple of them, but first and most, like, where, um, we have somebody to go on. Can we make sure that we're muting everyone who's not talking, please? Um, thank you. Uh, we have, you know, we have a target of 8,000, uh, for this year, but with COVID, I just wanna see where you think that actually is, uh, going to possibly end up. And then also, what kind of alternatives? I know we talked about the E stuff earlier. Are, are we considering for that?
Well, I think that youth sports is forever changing right now because of COVID. I think, uh, we are, of course, all of our, uh, summer sport leagues, our spring, uh, sport leagues was, was kind of, so technically, when you look at this year, uh, we was able to get basketball done, uh, but that's the only sport we've been able to, uh, have this year. So I, I, I don't have the exact number where that new target number will be, but it will be significantly less than the 8,000. Um, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to look at what do we do about fall sports. Uh, we have not made a final decision. Um, but, you know, your fall sports are, you know, you have soccer that has close proximity contact with people. You have football, there's definitely physical contact. Um, so one of the things we've been doing is, is listening to, there's been several, um, um, conference calls that we've been on where we've had different, uh, medical professionals that's, that's talking about where we are and, and what they think about fall sports. But we truly have not made a decision. If we can, uh, find creative ways to offer fall sports, I, I feel we, we want to be able to. We gotta make sure it's safe, uh, before we make that decision to offer. So we're definitely not where we wanna be as far as making a decision on fall sports at this current time. But it's things we're looking at. Uh, but I'll tell you, one of the things we, probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to do is, is if the numbers continue to trend away, is that you could have individual, uh, workouts, not, you know, lesson 10, proper social distance and spacing where you can teach fundamentals and drills from a distance. Uh, but we don't foresee any, uh, you know, full practices happening at this point in time. You know, as well as I do, uh, if we have a full practice, the next thing you know, they're gonna be scrimmaging, they're gonna be doing other things. So, uh, we wanna make sure that we're careful, we bring that, turn that, that switch back on for our youth sports. Cause we wanna protect our youth.
Yeah, I've had to throughout this process, uh, have to have some agencies break up some, uh, unsanctioned practices and things that could have looked like a scrimmage. Uh, to stay on, on this service though, Director, um, when you talked about how we only had the 6100 enrolled east and youth and adult sports during that fiscal year, but it was, uh, you didn't meet your goal because of the competition from private sports league. I wanna talk about, uh, how we can also start to, I think that we should, because many of them get permits from youth, that we should start to count that their, their numbers too, because we have to get a full understanding of who's using our fields, our facilities that are, you know, in the city, whether it's through you or through one of the private leagues, because then, then, then we can totally, I have a total picture of the amount of usage of our facilities that will tell us like what we have to do as far as how we're, uh, budgeting for this service and field maintenance and facility maintenance. Cause I think that that's something that we're missing. Have you guys thought about that?
We, we have not thought about capturing the numbers fully of our, uh, private users because I think one is that, uh, the challenge is we'll have to really lean heavily on our, our users, our private organizations. Um, but it's definitely something we can, we can consider. Um, I think I'm, I'm not sure if you was on early when I talked about how I was excited to now have a turf maintenance team in our agency, which is something that we really need it, because we have over 170 plus athletic fields. But one of the things we're trying to stress as an agency is that we wanna start just making, I guess you can say knee jerk decisions and make decisions that's based on data. And the best way for us to make decisions based on data is complete a, multiple different assessments. Like, we've done the pool assessment. We're finishing up the facility assessments. Uh, we're doing the playground assessments, but also getting this turf maintenance crew to go out and assess our fields so that as we're renovating fields each year, and I would, I'm not, I don't wanna share that number yet, cause I wanna make sure our team is in full force before. But I would like to have a percentage of our fields, uh, renovated each year so that we can, we can improve our, our facilities. Cause there are some fields that need some attention. Uh, that's, and we wanna make sure that decision we make also, there's an equity component to it.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that that's, that's the way for us to go, because we have to, we have to make sure that we're capturing all of those youth and adults. Uh, I want, I think that Councilman Henry brought up the, the advisory board earlier, and just want to point out that this is a conversation that we need to have to make sure that we get that back in, up and running as soon as humanly possible, because it's something that is required, uh, required for us to have, so we should have it. And the, and then the last thing I, that I have for you, Mr. Director, is I want to go to forestry again. And I know that my Councilwoman, Councilwoman McCray talked about those, uh, five positions that you guys had, and you just moved them over. Could you talk about, like, the productivity that you could have with both with increasing, uh, both that, but then also recreation for seniors? Uh, what kind of things you would be able to do if you were able to add money to those specific services?
Man, I, I think what you could do, if you, I mean, I, I don't want, it'll take time to put all the strategies together, but clearly, I mean, if we're able to add more manpower to our forestry, uh, division, uh, we'll be able to attack our SRS in a more efficient and effective way. Um, also, what we can do is we can, as Eric talked about earlier, is more proactive pruning. I mean, if we're able to trim our trees and maintain our trees, when storms come in, we will have, it, it will help us be more efficient and reduce the amount of trees that are coming down. Uh, so I think with just, with forestry, with recreation and, and in our facilities, if we can have a proactive program that we can maintain our facilities, then it saves us money in the long run. Uh, so, I mean, I, clearly, with more money, you can, you can ask, ask some additional positions, uh, you can add more, uh, tree, tree trimming crews. Um, I'm also excited that we have, I believe it's four, uh, tree trimming apprentices right now. Uh, we had a course postponing the program, um, when COVID hit, but we, we maintained the, the, the individuals, uh, but that, we're now getting ready to, uh, the school has confirmed that they're going to come back and finish out the program. So I think continuing to offer tree trimming opportunities. Uh, another thing I think I may have shared with you at some point in time is we're looking at our workforce across the board, and we're realizing that our workforce is, is, is seasoned, and, and we have to make sure that we're capturing the knowledge, because a lot of our, our workforce are seasoned, and they have a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, and we don't want that knowledge to walk out the door. But we have to also start preparing for, as this workforce starts retiring, where's their replacement? And so that's why we, we have, you know, seasonal maintenance positions, uh, that's why we had the Green Cadet program where we're, uh, you know, utilizing, um, young people and explaining to them about parks, as well as we're working with Roker, so that we're developing a strategy and a plan. As people move out and retire, we have replacements for them, but we don't allow that knowledge to go out. So I think all that is important, but clearly with more posi- more money, uh, more positions, uh, you can be more, uh, creative with, uh, reduce our SRS as well as then, uh, you know, improving our pro- proactive pruning. When it comes to seniors, uh, I, I, I'm, you know, we have a young lady there that is really reshaping and redesigning, uh, the, the senior program and the strategies and the programs around it. Um, of course, with the 200,000, um, she, one of the things that she shared with me is that she will identify additional Golden Age sites, as well as some of our Golden Age sites that's only maybe one day or two days a week. Maybe we can, now we can expand that option, because then we can hire part-time individuals, she can train them to run a 20-hour senior program, you know, Monday through Friday to five hours a day, um, that can make it more convenient for seniors. So those are some of the things that, that she's already talked about, um, looking at, and as well as other things that she can do to support what she's already doing, um, that can in turn maybe help support and reduce some of the costs that, that has been passed back to the seniors when it comes to trips and things of that sort.
And thank you. And, uh, uh, Mr. Director, I just want to also point out, I know that, you know, Councilman Snee could help with the connection here, but, uh, University of Maryland Eastern Shore actually has an agricultural program, and I'm pretty sure there are young people from Baltimore that are in. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Councilwoman McCray?
I have no additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, okay, scrolling, scrolling down the list of questions for, for Wreckin' Parks. Um, I just wanted to check in on, uh, another one to make sure that I hadn't missed this. Um, at the, at the beginning, uh, did Khalila get her questions answered about, uh, what would the department's ideal budget look like to ensure equitable access to recreation and programming? Um, did, did, was, was that covered at the beginning? Because I was having connection issues.
Um, no, I mean, I think that's something that we'll have to look at and see, sir. Uh, that's not an answer I can provide at this point in time, but I can definitely, uh, get you an answer to that.
And, and, and the follow-up to that is, where can the public see how your budget applies in equity analysis and what measurements do you use?
I think when, when it comes to equity, that is something that we, we continually redefine and shape in the process of how we, uh, identify, um, the spending. Um, I think that's something with the new, uh, workday system, it'll, it'll give us some more flexibility that we can, um, look at our budgets more closely. One of the things I do know is that currently, and our rec center side of the house, all of our rec centers have their own individual budget. So that's something that people can see now, how much money's been allocated, uh, to each individual rec center, um, that's, that's available now. Um, but that's something we'll have to look at in our other divisions and seeing how we allocate funding throughout our, our city. But I can tell you now, recs, recreation centers' budgets are broken out now, um, that breaks down by, by rec centers. But it's, I think it's something that we'll have to continue to explore and look at as we continue to develop our equity strategy.
Um, Mr. Chair, technically, that was two questions. So, uh, if you'd like, I can ask another quick one, or I can wait till the next round. Okay.
Go, go, Bill, Bill, go ahead. Or, I was talking to the president, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, uh, the, uh, we, we were very happy, uh, last year to, uh, see the Wreckin' Parks budget expanded, um, to allow rec center programming on Saturdays. Um, could we get, uh, the, the dollar figure necessary to go to Sundays? I know the president talked about seven-day, uh, rec center programming. Did, I, I, what I couldn't hear was whether there was a particular dollar figure attached to that.
That's something that we can, we don't have a dollar amount in front of us. That's something that we can work on. But like, as I shared with the Council President, is I would like for us to be strategic about it. Um, and maybe, uh, instead of rolling out a plan that will open the centers for 42, that all 42 centers, that we look at, um, target areas and based on our current attendance, look at our attendance numbers, and maybe we start this out in a pilot program and grow it from there, versus looking to open up all 42 rec centers on Sunday. But that's definitely something we can get to you all, and that's something we can improve upon from a strategy standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Sorry about that. Still talking to the president. Um, Councilman Henry, you're good?
Uh, no, I, I have, I have plenty more. That's why I'm asking, you know, do, do, do you want me to just keep going? Because I can just keep going until-
Before you move on, can I ask a question?
Yeah, shit, thank you, Councilwoman. I really appreciate that. Very, very kind of you to take one for the team.
I, I have a quick question about, you mentioned the fields in the past, and I know that, um, fields in different areas, as we've been spending a lot more time outdoors, are just in bad shape. Um, but I know some of the fields, uh, in the city were, um, due to be resurfaced, so we could play on, because I know some sports teams have been canceled. Due to COVID, have we lost any of that money, or will we, the ones that were expected to be, um, to get some maintenance done to them, are we still on board for that, for those?
Bill, can you talk a little bit about our maintenance strategy and how we're going to attack athletic fields going forward?
Sure. So we've got, um, a four-person team led by one of our former park district managers, who is going to systematically move through all our fields. They're going to aerate them. We've bought some new equipment to aerate them in the correct way, get them seeded in the right season, either in the spring or in the fall. Um, and right now, we have two fields that we're trying to put out to bid for major, uh, overhauls. One of them is the Reptile House in Druid Hill, and the other one is the Extension in Patterson Park. And so we're learning how to put those out for bid right now, and I think we're pretty close to doing that.
Thank you. That's, that's all I had.
I have a question.
Council Vice President-
Uh, this is Miss, I guess for, uh, Mr. Von Der Sek as well. Um, uh, well, did I read something where you're going to be removing, and this is specific, I guess, in my district to, um, Penhurst Park. You're going to be, you're going to remove that bathroom, correct? Is that, was that a correct statement? The, the rest, there's a restroom, I think, on that park that is never used, and we know that area, um, is also a high prostitution area, and I think the community had wanted it removed.
Um, let me, let me walk into the other office and grab Dave Carter. I don't, I didn't know that we were removing it. I knew it was problematic. I knew that we had secured it, um, but he might know more details. And I think he, he's listening in, but he's having problems, uh, actually speaking. Here he is, right here. Dave, you know about Penhurst?
Yes, um, uh, we actually met with a community resident who lives in the rear, um, a lady, and she asked us about actually renovating it and being able to open it for public use. So that was her concern. She wanted to save the building, because she has a garden right next door, and she wanted us to renovate the building.
Interesting. Uh, well, who's going to man the bathroom? I mean, it, I think it's a bathroom, isn't it?
Yes, and she, uh, said it herself, and there's a group that has a horseshoe pit there, that they would be willing to man it and make sure that it's secured. And we did have a contractor come out and give us estimates for the repair.
Okay, so I think you also need to have a conversation with the community president, Sean Stenette, because I don't think he knows about this.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cut, Councilwoman, you'll forward that, uh, his contact information to us. So what do you have at handy?
Um, Sean, you talking about the president's?
Uh, Mr. Stenette, yes.
Um, I think I have his cell phone handy, if you wanted to take that. He's pretty, um, uh, let me try to pull that up. Um, because I know there was some back and forth between some people, between those horseshoe people and the community. Uh, his, his, uh, cell number is 410-419-0328.
All right, thank you very much.
And I do have a, a Yahoo number for him, which is-
Are you sure you want to be reading this guy's personal contact information over the budget hearing?
Thank you. I'll give it, uh, I, I think that phone number will be suffice. I'll, I'll email you, um, Bill, the other information. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for, um, putting me on check.
Councilman Dorsey, you've just been awarded the next question. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, I know that Eric, um, mentioned the funding for last year, Eric, um, Deal mentioned the, uh, funding for stump removal last year. Um, how many stumps got removed, uh, is the result of that stump removal contract?
Uh, over 200. We started by prioritizing smaller stumps to get as big a bang for the buck, but we didn't focus on few specific areas. And that supplemented, um, I don't have the exact figure, between $200,000 and $300,000 of our regular general fund money that we've also been removing stumps. And as Director Moore said, uh, we've switched gears. So every time we remove a tree now, when we get to our next tree removal service request, uh, we have marching orders to remove that stump immediately. Uh, I've given up the 30 days, but basically, right after that tree comes out, the stump comes out. So that means, um, we're, we're not going to have such a big backlog in the future, but we do recognize that means there are older stumps still sitting out there, and we're whittling away at that also.
I would love to see some more whittling away in my district. I can only think of two that have occurred in the last year. And I, and, and I know that I've provided a list of some places, but I can think of plenty of other places off the top of my head.
Uh, so, Councilman Dorsey and Director Moore, I will have my, uh, I'll have Nathan Randolph, our GIS guy, do a, do a quick query, and we can see how many stumps were removed in the Councilman's district over the last 12 months. We'll provide that to them.
Yeah, I'm particularly concerned with some of the very large, uh, I know that you said that you focused on the small ones to get bang for the buck, but there are some very large ones that have been sitting for a very long time. And, you know, I and the communities around them would really like them to be gone, because we would like to replant trees there.
Amen. And we try to make that a priority, to remove the stump, so we know where we're targeting tree plantings the following planting season.
I will literally plant the trees myself, if you can get the stumps removed. I, every, I, I promise you that for every single stump that you can remove, I will, myself and find other volunteers and plant three trees for every single stump that you can remove, and then you can stretch your tree, tree planting dollars farther. But I just really want these stumps gone.
We will deputize you, make you an honorary urban forester. But I agree, we, we, we need to do more of that. Um, uh, you know, when we did the inventory, when, when we were given the, um, uh, supplemental money here a couple of years ago to do a tree inventory to get a handle on what we have throughout the city, we came up with 5,000 stumps just along our city streets. And we literally have service requests, it's not all service requests, that's just how many stumps we found, close to 3,000, as Director Moore was saying, of stumps and service requests. So I'm not making excuses, I'm just stating the facts. So we, we do have backlog, and, uh, we do our best to, uh, get as much done we can with the money we have.
Okay, I, um, whatever we can do to get some more done, uh, I'm all in support of it.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Councilman?
Yeah.
Just wanted to jump in for one second, because me and Councilwoman McCray need to step out for a second.
Sure.
So when you're done, we're going to go over to Councilman Henry, uh, to chair. Uh, I guess he's going to start with himself, uh, once you're done with your question. Uh, Director Moore, I don't think I'm coming back for the duration of this hearing. Uh, I just want to thank you, uh, especially Adam, uh, definitely Bill Von Der Sek, uh, the entire team, and for everything that you're doing. And I also want to give a very, very special shout out to Eric Deal. This man continues to do more with continually less. At some point, when we don't have a crisis in Baltimore City, we've got to figure out how to proactively invest in the work that Eric is doing. Uh, and I'm not going to go out and do three trees for every one stump. I'll take you up on that offer once. Councilman Dorsey wants to do it continually, that's his prerogative. But, um, we got to find a way to get this man more resources, uh, for the work that they're doing. So Eric, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. Um, I want to ask, we've had a couple of people, uh, leave Wreckin' Parks recently. Molly Gallant is no longer with us, and, um, Ethan, who also worked in, uh, a similar capacity, is no longer there. How long do we anticipate it taking to fill these positions? And at what point are we ever going to have a full-time trail manager for the city?
Well, I'll start, I'm not sure who Ethan, Ethan must have left before I, I got there, but yes, Molly left, uh, for another job opportunity. We are, uh, in the process of requesting, um, to BMR to replace, uh, Molly. We currently have Kirsten that's filling in in Molly's place, um, and we're getting ready to ramp up her hiring for her summer staff. Uh, but I, I will stress to, uh, this, this committee, our outdoor recreation is another one of these divisions-
our outdoor recreation is another one of these divisions that was created back in uh earlier days, and there was no defined budget for those individuals. And those people have been uh funded in the past on a different divisions budget. Uh, one of the things that we have been trying to focus on is how we get um outdoor recreation the proper budget. They need to properly function and operate. They've done a tremendous job with a limited budget. That's another one of these divisions. I know Eric has done a tremendous job, and and there's, there's many of our divisions uh that are working on these streams budgets, stream budgets, but they're they're doing a really good job. So we are uh still moving forward to offer outdoor recreation when um we get through the the COVID uh pandemic. Uh, but we 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 don't see a delay in getting that position filled. From a trail manager standpoint, I I think that's a valid question, especially considering we're continuing to add more trails. Uh, Bill, I think in in the current stage, we are using POS funding to fund a trail manager, trail position, uh, but Joel now is is moved to into another position. So uh, what is the strategy there, Bill, to replace Joel in the trail position?
No, that's definitely something that we wanna put forward through the human resource process to get the trail manager uh position refilled. Yep, priority. And is is, you know, Joel was great, and we got him to go from a contractual position to a full-time position in our Recreation Bureau. So it was a win for the agency, and now we just have to fill that vacancy.
Sir, you're on mute.
Great. I I I appreciate it. I look forward to that position being filled. I don't think it can be um overlooked or understated that we no longer have Molly because we didn't fund recreation uh and the program, outdoor recreation and the programming that she was here to do. She's working somewhere else that they are funding and allowing her to do the work that needs to be done. That's exactly why we no longer have her, because we did not put forth the resources to make that programming thrive. Um, uh, and the last thing I would ask about is um, what are our plans for additional skate parks and pump tracks in the city? This is something that I wanna see at the um redevelopment of the North Hartford Playfield that we are banking capital dollars towards now. Um, and um, obviously, that site, I'm still waiting to hear from the department on uh what our steps are gonna be in planning and community outreach. Uh, we've been, I've been asking and following up about that for uh a very long time now and have not received any follow-up about that. Um, but I do wanna know in general, what are our plans for additional skate parks and pump tracks for the city?
That's a good question, sir, but I have to stress to to the fact that as an agency, we have to, we have to look at our current strategies. We don't have just an endless amount of funds that come into our budget every year for capital. We're working with the group, community right now to uh uh fund a uh, or build a skate park that's over in the Eastwood area. Um, and where I would love to put in more skate parks, where I would love to have more pump tracks, it's all gonna come down to dollars and cents. And I think we have to take a hard look at our existing facilities and making sure that we invest in the prop, in the existing facilities before we continue to add new amenities. So that's definitely something we can look at, but I I can't give you a a definite confirmed answer of what kind of dollar amount we can allocate to pump tracks and skate parks. Um, when we we have existing uh, in uh, in existing uh projects that we have to invest in. But uh, I I'm a fan of skate parks, so I I do understand the importance, but we have to kinda look at our priorities and make sure we have an established plan.
Well, let me just reiterate that this is something I've been asking to have happen at North Hartford Playfield for, I don't know, since two thousand fourteen. And we're in two thousand twenty, and um, I know that we have a skate park that in Carroll Park that basically, you know, is not up to you know, real standards. Um, and that we have a great one in Hampton now. Um, and that um, there's, that neither of those is anything like remotely accessible to the people in northeast Baltimore. Um, you know, I mean, it's a huge, huge gap um in accessibility for the whole northeast quarter of the city. Uh, and skate parks and BMX are like the number one and two uh requests um in the past wrecking park surveys. So I mean, there's a, there's a huge demand for them.
Yes, sir. Something we'll definitely, uh, Adam, I think you, we, as we develop this master plan and the strategies, we need to make sure that we we assess skate parks and determine uh where probably they they lie as well on the agency book for future capital. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from wrecking parks about the plans for North Hartford Playfield still. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm checking in on the rest of my colleagues. Gonna run down the list real quick to see if anybody uh has additional questions. Uh, Councilwoman McCray? Okay, Councilman Burnett? Okay.
I'm I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council President Scott? Okay, uh, Councilwoman Snead?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilman Schleifer?
Good.
Okay, um, well, that just leaves me. So, all right, let me go back to my list now. Uh, okay, the first uh, first of my my last set here, this is, this isn't that bad. Um, this one's a a data question, which is uh, what's the current vacancy rate in the agency? Uh, how many of your positions are currently vacant compared to the total funded?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get that to you. Um, I I don't think we have our HR person on this call, but I can get you that number to the, to the committee about the vacancy rate. But we'll tell you, we have been doing a really a a tremendous job of filling our vacant positions. Uh, we don't count many.
That's, that's what we think. We 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 want that as a, as a, as part of the selling point to why we should give you more positions. Um, uh, second question, um, what training do rec center staff receive on child safety, uh, specifically in regards to uh different sports injuries, uh mandated reporter training, et cetera?
Uh, the the council president just recently, um, not recently, but that was one of his bills that he he introduced. Um, and so there is, there is some trains, but there's additional train that we need to uh put in place. Um, Jacia, do you have anything right now that just from a training standpoint outside of the the normal things that we do?
So annually, um, our staff is trained on uh those sorts of items. So we are doing some trauma-informed care. We talk about mandatory reporting and just those uh type of compliance trainings that are necessary for us in dealing with young people. Uh, one of the things that Director Moore is uh very focused on is um investing in our human capital. So we haven't spent a lot of time today talking about that. Um, so as we talk about uh making wrecking parks better, um, our human capital is our number one resource. Uh, so as this chief of staff, one of my goals is to continue to put out our priorities in that regard. And there needs to continue to be, we need to continue to make improvements in how we invest in our staff. Uh, our HR team has recently gone through um some classification studies about our positions and how we fit into the market. We are lagging behind in the salaries that we pay our recreation staff. Um, additionally, we need to look at the uh minimum requirements for our positions. So as we continue to grow into the state of the art of agency, we need to invest in our positions. Uh, that includes an upgrade in our positions. Um, wrecking parks is a real profession. Uh, we have accrediting agencies that give us um standards in which we need to abide by. Our current position pay and classifications do not reflect that. Um, you'd be happy to know that since Director Moore has uh taken the room, he has put a big emphasis on making sure that our staff is certified by the accrediting agency that um deals with recreation and parks. Additionally, we are CAPR certified agency, so we're going through that space. Um, so as we talk about expanding operations and moving to seven day operations, we cannot do so without a continued investment in our staff. That's training our staff, that's getting them certified, that is making sure they have the opportunity to seek higher education. Um, so we have internally been um encouraged in that. We uh recently hosted our first in-house training session, well, we were before COVID was hitting. We had uh secured some trainers to come in and do some in-house training to prepare our s- uh staff to sit for the exam. So one of the things I don't want us to miss is that um giving us a lot of money to open the buildings is amazing. Um, but our staff have to meet the model. They have to be trained in customer service. They have to be uh trained in a program delivery. Um, so while we are continuing to talk about expanding operations, we cannot do so without the investment in human capital. Um, the HR team is working diligently to outline some minimum trains that everyone needs to have outside of the ones that we are um mandated to do to be in compliance. Um, but we're talking about civility. Uh, when we talk about equity, that is a big passion of mine in the agency and how we train our staff um to just be knowledgeable um in that regard. Um, there has not been a uh concrete effort in that regard until recently. So we are working to bring in some trainers to to really do the hard work that it is to uncover our unconscious bias and how we deliver services, how we interact with our youth. Uh, a trauma-informed care is another area that we um have been working with um Councilman Cohen on, and that we wanna continue in that regard. We we have to continue to invest in our staff. So I've been quiet on the call in large part and talk about new buildings and maintaining everything. Our human capital is our number one resource. We have to spend some attention and some real dollars and cents making sure our staff is appropriately compensated, but also that they are equipped to do recreation. Uh, how it exists in twenty twenty is not the recreation that it was twenty years ago. You need to be a trained professional to work in this field.
Well, I'm glad you broke your silence. You, you, you are the preacher. We are the choir. Thank you so much. Um, and and listen, Reggie, when, 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 when you've gotten the agency uh spun up the way that I know we both wanna see it working, uh, if you wanna lend Jacia out to DHR so she can uh take that attitude and spread it across all of the agencies of city government, I don't think anybody here would be unhappy about that prospect. Um, the the very last question I have, and I get um that this is not, this is also not one that you probably can answer off the top of your head, but it it is one I would like you to think about as we move forward. We're in this really weird time right now um of of COVID nineteen where the city is doing things it doesn't usually do and not doing things it usually does. Um, but I, as, as, as your, as your organization has been required to do more in terms of food distribution than is normally the case, um, what it's gotten me thinking about is the amount of food distribution that uh the school system normally does when the school system is up and running normally. Uh, it, it, if, if, if there's one good thing about a crisis is that it uh, it shows you where the weaknesses in your system are. And um, what I would hope is that wrecking parks would be uh interested in uh, in working with the school system in the future to work out a seamless food distribution plan that is year-round and week-long. So that when schools are open and functioning and they're feeding their kids, um, there is a seamless ability for those same kids who um need to get that food from the schools, um, to get that food from uh rec centers uh on the, on the weekends and uh during the summer and winter holidays when schools are closed. So I know that's not something that you can address right now, but um I hope it's something that you would be willing to be part of if we can figure out how to make that work in the future. We're gonna come out of COVID nineteen with a lot more um information and a lot more experience in feeding all of the people in our city. And I hope we won't waste that, um, but we'll in fact uh use that and build on it to make certain that we um do a better job of minimizing food insecurity uh when we return to whatever the new normal is.
Yes, sir. That makes a lot of sense. And and I I'll, I'll tell you, our, we've had two individuals, Jaciel's one, Kendra Moore's the other, has been working uh hand in hand with um Ms. Elwes, the school system and others during this crisis. So I I think there's things we've learned. Um, we, we're, you know, that hopefully we won't have to go through another pandemic, but if we do, I think we'll build, we'll, we'll come out of this thing a whole lot better than the way we went into it. And uh, and that's when I just, you know, I'm, I applaud our team. Because, you know, from day one, when this thing hit, our, we didn't, our staff had to come to work. Our staff had to, you know, continue to provide meals, and we got better along the way uh because it was something new. So I totally agree with you there, but I think we, we, we're taking some good notes here and and uh we better develop a better strategy. So if something else ha- happens, you know, we'll be a little more or better equipped for, you know, uh, a crisis, when, if it means us having to turn into a food distribution site or service.
Director, thank you again, uh, both for your own work and for the work of your team. Uh, all the questions from the committee having been asked, I believe we're gonna go into a brief recess uh before reconvening sometime uh in a few moments, just after three o'clock.
Just while we're here for one second, I just wanna put on the record, I wanna ask Bill Von Drusek to follow up with me about Chinkab and Run, please.
Um, Mr. Stagman, uh, do you or Ms. Themmler have that on the list?
Yep, I I I have it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Councilmen. We're gonna, we're gonna wrap this one up. Um, are there any other questions? All right, um, if anyone else has anything um offline, I'm gonna ask that you uh bring that to uh Director Moore and Jenny. Uh, Councilman Schleifer, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep, you're gonna be chairing the next one. Uh, we're doing Comptroller's Office.
Okay, at three o'clock, right?
Yep, hold on one second. Was that it? Councilman Schleifer?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep, all right, we're gonna give it, uh, give it till three oh five PM before we get started, please. Um, we're just doing some shuffling musical chairs in the uh, in the chambers, okay?
You're gonna be out the full hearing?
No, no, I'm gonna be back shortly.
Okay.
Yep, hopefully in twenty to thirty minutes, tops. Okay, thank you, Councilman.